Now, obviously, that's a best or worst-case scenario depending on what side of the fence you're on. But, obviously, they're not gonna get a hundred percent participation. So, if you look at this green area, that's hypothetically if everybody signed up. So, obviously, that's not gonna happen. So, really, these green areas are probably more, pretty likely gonna be even further shrunk. So, I'm sorry I missed that point. I guess one other thing, a couple of our committee members had an opportunity to travel up to Beale City this past week and kinda visit with the community up there. Dale and Ken Cool were up there, and I don't know if you guys had anything you wanted to share or learned anything to help the rest of us here?
Well, after going up to Beale and having been up near Carson City several months ago, the need for these maps became really, really apparent to get an idea of what a visual is. And by being to both those places, and especially at Beale, I can count a lot more than a dozen, a dozen turbines, because they had them packed in pretty close to the areas that they were in. And there are some pretty sizable green areas here that would take, from what I saw up there, several. Now, having said that, at the same time, and from knocking on doors, going into on people's property, talking to people outside, and people that were not, well, non-participating, those we saw in businesses, and then just residential people that didn't have any turbines. We talked to people that had turbines, some that didn't, but were right around them. It was kinda funny about how they reacted, you know, when asked about those. And mostly, they would right away say, "No, they're fine. They get used to them. It's no big deal." But then they would surely say, "But, well, there is the noise." And then it was like, "It really doesn't bother us that much, and it's only the noise from the blade itself." So, I found that, you know, they, there is a difference. They notice it. They notice those turbines. Uh, but they just don't, I didn't find anybody really that they bothered, that they were around, that's not impacting wildlife. So, um, for me, when I look at this stuff, you know, I see the need for this to allow turbines. But to take into the account, I mean, we got property owner rights, and that's important. There's an economy here that'll bring money into this, you know, community, and that's always a good thing. And whoever gets it, it ends up trickling through the, the community. So, we have that. On the other hand, the, to me, the big negative impact, and I think it's what most peoples is, is the change in the hierarchy. And so, when we talk about the heights of these, you know, you have higher limitation on height. You have less of them, but you see them more. You drop it down, you don't see them from afar. So, I don't know what the trade-off is on that. But yeah, I, I can count at least twenty on this map of six hundred seventy-six feet tip height. I could see some areas where they'd put three or four, I think, at least. I, I was amazed at how close they put them together, how, how much it looked actually.
They look both good from up there off the expressway. And if you're on the same, but don't they still have to have that setback from the property or the house?
Yeah, but I don't know what they do from each other.
That was one of my questions, is how close can they build with each other?
Right.
I don't know, but, I don't know. I haven't found the answer to that. It's on, but I know they have to avoid, you know, have those setbacks, the same.
Oh, yeah, from, from roads and.
From houses and everything.
Yeah.
And I can't believe they build them close enough that one falling over it would hit the other one.
No, but there are setbacks to roads on some, um, some ordinances that are barely the tip height. So, I'm sure they're doing that to each other on the turbine. So, yeah, I used, I see some big squares that are gonna get settled. And that's, you know, good for them, but, um, and then the other thing that I see, this map reveals to me is all those non-participating, participating parcels, the red ones with the dots, I mean, they're automatically excluded from any benefit in this, in, to themselves. But they're right there. Why is there, if I look at this map, they're putting dots on these and they're, you know, this developer is saying, "This is who's non-participating." They're excluding a lot of people from being able, you know, from, you know, and hey, this is good. It should be for all of them. And, you know, it is the same everywhere. The people that signed up, they never have anything bad to say about it. The ones that can't sign up, they say the worst things about them. And I've been kinda trying to push that along, get more participating property owners. I think that's the best thing a developer could do.
Yeah, one thing, Ken, I think, um, the, the non-participating parcels here, I think that's more of a non-buildable. I think those residents are, they would be allowed to participate if they chose to. But they wouldn't be able to, you know, small little parcels, they wouldn't be able to build, put a place or turbine, but I think they would, I think everybody in, from what I've.
All right, well, you brought, you brought up another point that I wrote down that I wanna bring up. All right, this is a map that Apex did. I like how it helps us visualize. It's not a contract, and they have stated non-participating parcels. They didn't say non-buildable. It says non-participating in the legend.
If you turn the page, Ken, this sheet right here, that shows the buildable area, huh?
Yep.
It's in green there, but it's not like non-participating outside. There's just outside boundaries.
Right, but they are on the front page designating non-participating properties. And the people that never got it, no. So, you know, I, I'd want us to be careful about putting too much store in this also and making sure that whatever we do, you know, we limit to where we don't take this like, hey, this is great. And then they go and run with something else. And the setback from non-participating homes and not the property line, that's, I, to me, that's as bad a, a method as it is to outright say, "No, we aren't gonna have any turbine." Those, to me, those are opposite experiences.
I wanna rephrase that, Ken, and then break the following.
Um, they're looking for setbacks from buildings, homes, dwellings, okay? And that's great for participating properties. For non-participating properties, it should be from the property line. Invading the setback into, into the property line and non-participating property is the same as, it's the same thing people are saying, you know, it's just the opposite argument of saying we shouldn't have any turbine.
So, you're saying, Ken, let me interpret that, because what you're saying is that it shouldn't be a hundred and fifty feet in one sentence and two hundred in the other, two times the height or one and a half times the height?
It could be two times the height from a non-participating property line. And it can be, and, and I've also said, I've made the setback smaller from dwellings and participating properties if you want. They're, they're, you know, opting into it.
Right.
They're putting them in a.
What are you saying from a non-participating, you mean, we shouldn't put it from a dwelling? We should just put it right from the property line. We shouldn't include the dwelling in that.
We don't do anything else from the dwelling. Unless, except, except if you build or retain inside your own property. Pretty well.
Yeah, 'cause then if they wanted to build, uh, they could build on that section of the property. If they didn't wanna be that close to it, they could, that section of the property is not usable.
I thought ours proposed was two hundred feet from their dwelling, a hundred and fifty feet from the property. Which is the opposite.
It's two, it's two times from the dwelling, one and a half times from the property line.
I think for.
But what he's saying is that if they're non-participating, we shouldn't even do it from the dwelling. You should just be right in the property line.
I think for the, the benefit of the planning commission, if you go to the draft ordinance that we have been working off of, let's see what document it is, document five, page eight. So, they are, we are, um, at least this draft is measuring setbacks from, um, property lines of non-participating parcels. Go to sub four on the top, on the, on the very top. And it's been, it's my experience that that is, that is common throughout ordinances in, in Michigan governing these types of uses. I think there are some, um, the way that some other ordinances that you may see in, in other counties is they will have that and how this draft is set up. They'll have a setback from non-participating lot or property line as well as, um, a setback from an occupied dwelling, essentially. And if you go to page seven, uh, number one, talks about that. I think that's the belt and suspenders approach, so I think there theoretically, um, there, there could be some possibility where you're, you're just distance away from a non-participating property line, but you're, you're still close to a occupied building, which, um, in many of these ordinances that they're, they're trying to prevent, um, at least occupied building provision from, for, generally, it's safety, but at the same time, the, the setbacks also play a role in how much shadow flicker and noise they generate on a, on a property or a building.
I don't understand what you just said.
Okay, let's, let's, I'll talk. I know, I can be very confused. So, on, on page eight, the, the, the way this draft ordinance is set back, set up right now, it's set up to make setbacks based on non-participating property lines. So, if you go to page eight, the top of four, bi- boundaries with non-participating lots, the turbine should not be, uh, one point five times hub height, which we agreed to switch out to tip height, uh, but that's pending a change of a property line of a non-participating lot. So, I just wanted to give the, the planning commission some, I know we're talking through the issue, but I also wanted a gentle reminder of what, you know, what is, uh, what is in the, in the draft we're considering. And then, at the same time, I'll, I'll add another note is, I think these maps do provide a good visual reference. At the same time, you should be considering, and I know this is very difficult because there's been one project and one developer has come to the, to the township of, you know, we wanna set standards that would be appropriate for any developer. So, I think these are very good examples, but they, they, you should, you should base it on, you know, not necessarily, you know, you should base on the needs of the community, uh, which, which can be reflected in the maps. But just, just keep that in mind, that we, we should think about it in, in a way that is, um, um, for any developer.
Yeah, so the draft ordinance we have right now is one and a half times from the property line of a non-participate.
Yes.
But it's two hundred from as well.
Two times.
Two times, yeah. And I'm saying it should be two times from a non-participating property.
I agree, Ken.
I guess my only concern would be if you had a house, um, let's say it's twenty acres or a forty, you know, and then the next neighbor down the road's got another eighty or a forty. You know, if you change that distance, I mean, does it need to be, I mean, obviously, you're gonna have various sized lots with dwellings. Property line could be, you know, if it's a two-acre lot with a house, obviously, there isn't a large difference there. But if you own twenty acres, there's quite a distance, whether that'd be necessary to, to have that extra half a time multiplier there.
Well, to me, that's where you'd need it even more because, um, just like they brought up about a building, you know, the space in front of a house that's set way back in the road, they can't use it because we restricted the building of a extra building. If you, somebody with twenty acres, well, they've got the room to split it and build another house. And you, if this goes through with one and a half time to setback from the dwelling of that twenty acre property, you've eliminated five hundred feet of buildable area that you may have.
So, so that's actually a really good point, because, and something that we actually run into a lot. Though, I think it's a good point from a planning perspective to, to think about it that way, but that in, in, in reality, someone would still be able to build within that, that setback. Because this, these standards only apply to someone citing this particular land use. So, they would, if they're, if they're building a home, for example, they would be able to, to do that within it, which is, 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 is something to think about, but I just wanted to clarify that.
So, you're saying you set the, do a setback of a hundred and fifty, or one and a half times setback from non-participate, you know, from property line?
Yep.
And you got a non-participating one. You didn't wanna do that. And so, he sells, you know, if he wants to build a house in the area, he can do it with what? With any one time?
He would generally be, be, I should say, restricted by what the, what the owning ordinance says, uh, is in the, I'm not saying this is right or wrong either way, but he would be, he would be restricted by what this owning ordinance says the setback requirements are for a single-family dwelling.
Right, so he could put it underneath the, the home, not that that would. Not that that would make it desirable.
Yes.
So, I.
The, the, I think the point still, your point is absolutely correct, but I just wanted to, to clarify, you know, this is, you know, this applies from the turbine, for citing versus the, the reverse. You're generally not gonna apply the standards in the reverse.
But if he has twenty acres, or one and a half times from the property line of that existing twenty acres all the way around.
It's not really close to the one and a half time.
Right, and he divides it in half, and you buy ten acres and I buy ten acres, our property lines are still gonna be one and a half times from any turbine.
You didn't gain any.
But I don't see how that makes any difference.
So, part of the, part of the public comment, I'll say, I think, you know, I don't know if the chair wants to.
One and a half times from the property line, so it can't get any closer.
Right, so even if you divide that property in half, it's still one and a half times. You can't make it closer because you divided the property in half.
Right, but the idea is, the idea is to be two times from the distance of, of the dwelling. And if you put a dwelling close to that property line, inside that additional five hundred feet, or the additional half time, which indicates a, you know, six hundred foot tip height, it's three hundred feet.
Right. The property line hasn't moved at all. The outside edge of the property line is the same.
Nope, so it's still one and a half times away, but for a desirable distance with a dwelling from a turbine is two times.
He's saying it's the dwelling distance.
The block was, someone could build a house closer to here, say.
Yeah.
So, it's less than two times.
Right, which makes it less desirable. That'll affect the property better.
Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, I was with Ken that day. We really had a good day, a good bright day. We went up several, go back several trails, roads to different turbines, shut off, listened to them, looked around. Uh, we paid attention to the, the shadows. Yeah, picked up like that for the shadow. We were spending pretty good that day. Uh, and we talked to several people, and we talked about shadows. Different ones talked about that a certain turbine at a certain time, we give them just a little bit kind of in the early morning, late in the afternoon, something like that. And one person even talked to us about, uh, a neighbor, hearsay, okay? That they had one that they were having a little trouble with, and when, and the company shuts it off every time. It was a problem. It turned it back on. Now, we did go to, uh, other different places. We just didn't go there. We went to the vet clinic. I hear, I've heard a lot of stories about horses aborted, cows won't, you know, so, you know, far-fetched stories. We went to the vet clinic. The people there looked at us like they did not know what we were about. Okay, Dr. Cole, he probably didn't know what we were about. Anyway, um, we went to the bank, no oppositions anywhere, they thought, they had no, nobody reading objections. The objections that we've heard quite a little isn't, kinda gotta get used to seeing them. But you do get used to that for a while. Uh, we talked to a school board member. He was very influential. And a lot of these people we talked to said, "You take our name and address, we've got somewhere to call it, call it." School board member from Beale City Schools said that had just more than doubled their SAV. Just the, the turbine segments. He said that took their last bond proposal and will cut it in two in years. That's just some of the stuff that we, uh, that I picked up anyway, that I'm close to break, yeah, how we got.
Nobody said anything bad about Apex and the developer, the fact they said they were pretty good. Now, they did say their subcontractors are bad, but.
Yeah.
That's, that's for the property owner.
Apex had to come through and clean up behind some of their, I don't even remember what the names of the.
Yeah, the company, yeah.
Um, one thing, one person brought up that, uh, they're in the middle of the turbines, and he said he had a, a TV antenna, a big stationary antenna, and he said it monkeyed up his reception from certain places. Uh, Apex, which was the builder at that time, came in and put them in a, a new antenna. You know, I'm not a TV man. They put him in a new antenna with a rotor, and that rotor took care of that problem. Except you have to turn the rotor. And he also stated that just down the road, there was non-participating property owners, now, eight or two acres, whatever it was, and they had problems with two, non-participating. And Apex put them in a, in, in Kansas. I was surprised to hear that. I didn't hear it directly, I heard through the. And one person, I don't remember which one brought it up, about the lady, you know, that, that is an issue. And when this was proposed up there, I, I'd say it was close to three years ago when the layout was put in and set out that this aircraft detection thing was really new. They didn't have anybody to go on or anything, so they kinda decided against it. Uh, they wish they'd have done it now. In case you don't know what that is, that's a, uh, only turns the lights on if there's aircraft within a couple miles or whatever. I, I don't know what the distance would come on, or else if there's no aircraft in the area, they're not, um, that's just a few of the things that I took away. And there was quite a, we let people talk. We didn't do the talking. They did the talking. And I thought that was really good.
Thanks for you guys to take that trip. Sounds like it was a perfect time. I guess a question for you, Kyle, on to do an overlay district. I mean, do you necessarily go by roads or distances? I mean, you can draw however you want, or I guess what are the guidelines as far as if you were to implement an overlay system?
If you were, if you were to implement an overlay system, you could do it any way you wanted. You would just break the township into an area where you could have areas or area where you could build this land use, so turbines, and then areas where you could not. So, you could do it by sections, you could do it by roads. Seen it done both ways. The other way that, um, the draft before you does it is you can also do it by individual setbacks from, this isn't overlay, but individual setbacks for non-participating lots, um, habitable structures in your township, likely lakes, um, and, and so forth. So, those are the two ways you can do it. But if you're doing overlay, it's basically an open canvas. You have an open map for your township, and you draw where you can have, uh, this, this land use or you can't have it.
Chris? Looking at the overlay here, uh, our township does lay a little bit like the one did up there to Beale City, you know, the township just west of Beale City, I, two miles, was it, where the lake was?
Yes.
If that, that was the issue. We did drive around that lake, and those turbines on the east side aren't that far away from the lake. I don't know. We could measure it off to a half, three quarters of a mile, maybe that, I don't know. Um, but when you drive around on the west side of that lake and look across, I realize most people have that lake property. They don't want to sit, you know, they don't wanna see that. That with our overlay here, the only thing I see on that is, is it, it looks like it, it's possible to go like a half mile more to the east on that overlay from Indian Lake. And actually, with our look out here or possible building sites, is there, really is not going to affect that too much. And if you, it looks like to me, if you went another half mile, and then they have to put their setbacks in or what our setbacks will be from there, that would, that would take it away from the lake a lot. I ain't saying it would disappear, but it would sure take it away. I don't know. Any discussion on that would be good.
Well, I assume you're kinda looking at east of Bailey Road here, almost to Amble Road. I mean, there's a lot of rural residential in there.
Well, that's a, that's, yeah, that's a mile left there. I'm talking about at least going another half mile there.
Right.
If you make it more like the rest of the rural area, it's more.
Right, yeah, the east portion is a little bit thinner.
But I, I don't know, I just. I think it's pretty, a good idea. There's not much buildable site there anyways.
I think your setback's gonna take care of it anyways. It's residential, so why even?
No, it might be.
I mean, you, you have so much rural residential there, all you're doing is, it's not gonna be built there anyway, so why? There, nothing's really gonna be built till Amble Road is gone for this. I mean, so they're actually getting a whole nother mile. Basically, half our township is not gonna get anything, so why make a bigger overlay when you're not gonna get it? You've got too many two houses right there. I, I think you're adding more to what you don't need to.
And this map may not be perfect or accurate, so.
No, it's strictly hypothetical, and that's assuming.
I mean, you have a lot of rural residential right there.
I do.
I mean, it's, and I think that's why they're meaning non-participating, it's under twenty acres, which won't be buildable, and you have a lot of that divided up right there.
But it's not a hundred percent of that, and then you're talking about taking more away from property rights, again.
Right.
Everything that's blocked out already, probably. Everything that's blocked out already, probably, and we, we don't know apart it's from the west, it's not our township. It, it might not be, we, we can't determine whether it's from the west, so, yes, I wouldn't. To, to me, like Bailey, Bailey Road is a good divider, and it's straight, it's straight, it's, it's a good rectangle, good for people from Indian Lakes to look at this and say. Hey, this is, this is the, the deadline right here, Bailey Road, uh. And if the other, if there is too many residential, they're never gonna put there anyway. And that kinda gets back to the, not needing all the extra height, if, if you have a good setback of one and a half times or two, whatever you end up with. But it is not, it's a thought.
One of the questions that popped into my mind is, what about community growth? As far as, once the power's built, I mean, are we limiting ourselves? Do we have to be careful of that? If, if property owners wanna sell off an acre or two alongside a road in a district? Set, you know, limit their ability?
Well.
I mean, we don't wanna stunt community growth.
We did make a, a little note of that on our trips there, Frank. Uh, we did see one house that was just being completed, one that was roughed in and another foundation. Or basement, I guess, probably. Writing about. Who was building them or what was building them, don't know that, didn't see that. Didn't see a whole bunch of houses for sale, didn't see anything, so.
Find that whole area around roads, which, for example, I, I didn't build up there, right there.
We didn't go good.
We didn't go that far east. There's a big subdivision, there are roads, which they have, a lot, I mean, I'm sure they got a fair amount of property setbacks.
Well, that's what I'm wondering about, there is some property setbacks, so if we build the power first, you're. Park setbacks are such that it's not an opportunity to grow, I mean, I think we need to be careful of that.
Wait, one and a half times.
How do you find that number?
Yeah.
It's very difficult. If you go two times from a road and one and a half from a dwelling, then that gives them an extra, you know, hovering fee, that'll, I, I figure it out. You have to have, what, two acres here? In the township?
Build a mill.
And also, when you talk about setbacks or height remission from a road. Um, now, when we asked this for the met towers to be built, from a road, they were one point one. From a road or a ditch, a drainage ditch.